All right, mics lit up here.
We have a, uh... My iPad is dead and I don't have a charger with me. We have one laying around.
All right, if there's nothing on agenda or consent, how about councilor concerns? Anybody with a concern? Water fountains are full of kids?
Yeah.
Movies in the park are about to start. Those are fun.
Eat your popcorn.
All right, if there's nothing, let's jump right in then to scheduled work session items, starting with community sharing agreements.
Hello, I'm Keith Catco, Assistant Finance Director. So this is the annual renewal of the Wilsonville Community Sharing Agreement for fiscal year 1920, and it's slated for $51,921. Yeah, fiscal year 1920.
2020.
2020.
2020.
Okay, okay.
Fiscal year 1920.
Yeah. Fiscal year in 2020.
1920.
So, and Tammy Pappo from the Wilsonville Community Sharing will be here tonight at 7 o'clock for the council session. So she'll go over an update on their services. I just wanted to add a few points for context. This has been an ongoing financial support since fiscal year 2010, 11, subject to yearly renewal by the council. The support comes by the way of a grant from the city that has two parts, a general purpose grant and a separate utility billing assistance grant. In the general purpose grant, part of this is, has traditionally been indexed to the CPI, and next year would go from $34,740 to, up 3.4% to $35,921. And the utility billing part of the grant has traditionally stayed flat at $16,000. And so the total of those two parts combined would be the $51,921. We pay out the grant quarterly, and in turn, the WCS reports back to us, how they spend the funds and in that nature. So they have done all their appropriate quarterly reporting. For the last quarter report that was from March 2019, they had spent all the funds for the utility portion up to that point and had extended the program to, as reported on their report, to 18 households. So that is kind of the context I can add. And like I said, they'll be here tonight at the council meeting to kind of go over their services more.
The other piece that council will, some of the council will remember is that a few years ago, we were collaborating pretty intensively with community sharing to get them onto a more sustainable track. And I'm hopeful that when they come, they'll be able to report about their overall budget and how much, what extent they have resources from other places coming in to be part of their budget. The last year or two have been pretty solid reports from what was once a situation where the city was the primary funder of the entire operation. So I don't, I hope they are ready for that, if they're asked to be ready.
Yeah, Tammy said she'll be coming with a presentation, so.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Next up is the Clackamas County Multi Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation. Didn't you make the name longer?
I'm here tonight to talk about the natural hazard mitigation plan for the city of Wilsonville. And, correct, the official name is the City of Wilsonville's Addendum to Clackamas County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, updated in March 2019. And so the county has done an update to their hazard mitigation plan. Ours is basically just addressing things that are unique or different to the city in association with what the county has. We were fortunate in that we worked with the University of Oregon, the Institute for Policy Research Engagement, and the Oregon Partnership...
Sorry, there we go. And the Oregon Partnership for Disaster Resilience. And so we were able to have this work completed through a grant, so there was no cost to the city. And we worked with the policy research group. We met with them, we talked through the various elements of our previous plan. So this is the third update to our plan, and then we were able to create it. Pressed the wrong button, there we go. So here is the mission of the natural hazard mitigation plan. I'll let you read it. Okay, and we do this to get FEMA approval. So we're required to have our plan pre-approved by FEMA, which is done. The council would give official blessing, and then it goes back to FEMA for final approval. With this document, then we are eligible for, or meet the criteria in order to get hazard mitigation grants, so be able to do projects, if we wanted to, that could help us in pre-disaster, be better prepared for emergency, and/or if there were a disaster, to be able to get some grant funding post-disaster. So the goals are the protection of property in life, to help our system, augment emergency services, encourage the partnership with other agencies, and then also make sure the public is aware of things that are, we are doing as well as things that they can do. We put together a hazard mitigation advisory committee with many members throughout different departments within the city. We also involved Toala Valley Fire District, as well as Wesleyan, Wilsonville School District in our discussions. These are the various types of hazards that we considered that could or could not happen to our, to our city.
Go back just one second.
All right. Let's see, how we go backwards. There we go, yes, sorry.
Okay, okay, I just didn't get to that.
Okay.
Slow reader.
So from that, in the document itself, it's a little small here. From that, we came away with some action items. Some were carried over from previous versions of the plan, and some of them we had reworked into maybe a different level of a goal or who was taking the lead of them. And so we have these various action plans. Once the document is approved by FEMA, we will reconvene the Hazard Mitigation Advisory Committee and talk through which of these need further action to be implemented. And this is the second page.
Are those any priority order on the plan?
No, they're, those are mostly listed by the type of disaster, not necessarily, so each, each disaster is, whoops, there we go. So you have the multi-hazard, the MHs, we have the earthquakes. So it's just more in the order of the disasters listed, but not necessarily in a priority, priority within each disaster. All right? And so we also took advantage of putting this information out on social media and had it out on our city website for the public to be able to comment on, though we didn't receive, we got like 52 hits, but no actual comments. So with that, any questions?
Counsel, questions? Counselor Akabol.
First of all, I thought the plan was really well put together and very comprehensive. In, now, I highlighted many things in here, so I don't know if I'll find it exactly verbatim again. But there is talk about the, the kind of projected what the amount of destruction and loss of life might be in a daytime versus evening earthquake specifically, I'm remembering. And of course, it's much higher in the daytime because people are in buildings and away, more in like non-wood structures, I think it said, right? It got me thinking, what do we know about what our business community does as far as earthquake drills or their own preparation inside the many different workplaces? And that's kind of an off-topic question. So I understand if you want to loop back to that, you know, some, at a different meeting or something like that. But it just kind of triggered that thought in my head. And then it does, let's see, one of the action items, I think, is right, to develop public education programs to inform the public about some of this material, I guess. And so maybe it does kind of play into that. And I wondered if you could talk at all about...
Right, so with the business community, I mean, we try to get information out there. If there's opportunity where there's going to be a function, such as the Coffee Creek Correctional, they have, every year they have for their employees, they have a work fair. I guess it's not really a work fair, it's kind of a health and wellness fair. And we have gone there in the past and handed out information to them about how they could individually become better prepared. And I have had companies, actual companies, who are putting together their plan reach out to me, but I would say it was a very small fraction of that. And then as far as working with the schools, haven't really done that fully, I guess. I mean, we had Tim Woodley being involved, but I'm not 100% sure where the, or the schools are in their preparedness.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it seems like that's probably an important thing for the community as a whole.
Right.
Yeah.
Other questions? Counselor West?
Along those lines, we hosted, I don't know, two years ago in our house, all our neighbors got together, they came to our house, and it was an emergency preparedness and what to do. And they'd get a little like demonstration on like your emergency packet, and who to call and city stuff. And I don't know, we just hosted, all the neighbors just came to our house. I don't know if that is something that's associated with something like that, or that was just us neighbors being good neighbors with one another, or if that's something that could be, that would tie into this where communities and HOAs and a block can do like a little block party around emergency preparedness.
Well, we do encourage that, and as communities reach out, we provide them with all the materials, such as Map Your Neighborhood is one of them. And then also, there's opportunities where Red Cross has done presentations within the city. And so, you know, there's just various ways that we try to reach out to the citizens.
I think we used that Map Your, if I remember right.
Map Your Neighborhood.
Yeah, that was part of it.
It's a very popular one.
Counselor Stevens?
So I was a little surprised to see that law enforcement wasn't part of your team, simply because that, that can be, I mean, when you have a disaster, there's chaos, so.
There's a difference between the emergency operations plan and the hazard mitigation plan.
Right, yeah.
The hazard mitigation is one of the most likely hazards of the community.
How do you affect that?
Like, like making sure that people don't build on slopes.
So you're talking about, you can't do it. It's you. It's you. So, yeah, well, I was thinking, right, I'm thinking more in the emergency, how do you deal, because municipal management is going to be here.
Yes, yes, and they were involved in the development of the emergency operation plan.
And you get a large group of people, they get it quarterly at the school district, and it involves all...
All of those, and you have those tabletop exercises?
You do tabletop exercises?
October, Quake.
Something that Martin Montalvo is now plugged into as well?
Yes.
You do a lot of that.
Okay, okay, so it's a different thing. Okay, thanks.
The question about private sector, I think, is a legitimate question that, you know, we haven't maybe dealt with that much. I mean, if we have something happen, the big earthquake, you know, what? All these entities that have their own internal plans, but what are they going to do? They're going to be calling government? They're going to say, what about this? What about that? Is there going to be any coordination at all? I mean, how, how is this supposed to work?
I think their first mantra of emergency management is that you're on your own for the first at least 72 hours. I think they've expanded that now.
Two weeks. That you should be prepared for two weeks.
We're focusing on getting critical infrastructure back up.
Correct. And related to that and what other industries are doing, of course, we have the Kinder Morgan drill coming up here, which is a full two-day drill to talk about what they are going to do in the event of an earthquake or emergency of some kind here in Wilsonville.
But if we have an employer with 500 people, you know, seems like we might want to know what they're going to do.
Yeah, I could check in with the chamber.
I know, I know. So that coordination question, seems like it could instantaneously come to the forefront, and we maybe at least should have thought about it or figure out how we're going to approach that. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, we always think about bridges or structures, structured road situations with, like the Boone Bridge or major, the I-5 underpassing. But do we also assess the other, the earthquake readiness of, of all the other unders and overs, structures?
You mean the assessment of their, their...
For local bridges or for state or federal?
Any of them, but our local ones in particular, the, where Wilsonville Road goes over Beckman Creek, for instance.
Like I say, the state, I know the state government's required to do a structural analysis.
So, so the, ODOT does inspections of our structures, but I do not know of any specific analysis that we have done on the earthquakes or the seismic stability of any of those bridges.
But ODOT does their facility?
They, well, but they inspect the bridges within our city, so that, like the, the bridge there on Wilsonville Road over Beckman Creek.
Right.
So ODOT does the inspection of the bridges on our behalf, and they give us the information. But I do not know of any seismic assessment, Patty, if you ever, yeah, of, of actual seismic assessment of our bridges.
Or, because now we have more. We have the Barber Bridge, we have the...
The other Beckman Bridge.
Beckman Bridge.
Yeah, the, yeah, the Barber, the Beckman, yes.
Wilsonville Road over, over Arrowhead, goes over Coffee Creek. We have multiple, multiple lines.
Right. All right.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Trimat Stiff Formula. Good evening, all. I am Dwight Brashere, the Transit Director for SMART, and joined by...
Amanda Guile Hinman, Assistant City Attorney.
All right. Back in 2017, the legislature passed House Bill 2017. Among the many requirements for that particular bill was, once it became law, was that the qualified entity, which in our case is Trimat. Trimat had to come up with an intergovernment agreement that would allow for the distribution of the funds collected here, in this case, in Wilsonville. So they had, they needed nine, I think, nine total IGAs. And their goal was to make all of the IGAs uniformed, which was something that we didn't personally care about in any event. About three months ago, they presented us with a draft IGA, which most of us, the other, the nine subrecipients, identified almost immediately as being a bit one-sided in its approach. They admitted that it was, but that was the way they wanted it. And so for three months, we fought, and we fought, and we fought some more. And I engaged ODOT, who didn't want to be engaged. I engaged OTA, which I'm a board member of, and the OTC. And eventually, we were able to, as Pat, this past Thursday night and Friday morning, get what we believe is a very good agreement. I wouldn't call it excellent, because we would have gotten everything that we wanted had it been an excellent agreement, but it's a very, very good agreement. And Amanda, for her part, and I'll let her talk a little bit about her involvement, worked very closely with Andrew Naylor, who is County Council for Clackamas County. And in the end, the two of them, working together, represented all of the providers in Clackamas County. They, Canby and Sandy and Malala allowed the two of them to work on the group's behalf. And so we were a united front, and that caused a little bit of problems for, for Trimat as well. So Amanda, you can talk about the legalities of it if you will.
Yeah, and I'm happy to answer any questions, specific questions for the agreement, but as Dwight said, this has really been a few months-long process of red lines going back and forth. And the main provisions, the main causes of concern for us have been essentially resolved. You know, this is a new situation for both Trimat, well, for ODOT Trimat and us with this HB 2017 money. So we're operating without examples, you know, prior examples to rely on. This is sort of new territory. So this agreement goes through fiscal year 2021, and then we'll need to do a new one, which will be based on a new stiff plan with new projects. So there will be an opportunity potentially to address any issues that we do see come up in that new agreement, but this really is going to be the foundation for the agreements that we will have moving forward in the distribution of these funds, barring us becoming our own qualified entity and not needing Trimat to distribute the money to us. So I'm happy to answer any, any questions, though, that you have about particular provisions.
And if it's approved this evening and eventually signed by Mr. Cosgrove, that would cause the funds, our first disbursement to reach us, now they're saying by July 3rd, I believe it is. It was supposed to be July 1st, but they moved it to the 3rd because of the holiday or something. They do one check, two check runs a month, and anyway, it'll be July 3rd. We're expecting, I think in the neighborhood, about $500,000 roughly in this first disbursement. The second disbursement will happen July 19th. And that one should be a little greater than that, than the $500,000.
And just for clarification, this is in the agreement, but the disbursement at the beginning of July is money that would, and the one that's coming later in July are both fiscal year 2019 money. That's already been collected. And so the first disbursement that we would see of fiscal year 2020 money will be in three months, about October, probably.
Counselor Stevens?
So it says in the executive packet, it says fiscal year 2019, 447, projected revenue 447,238. So that's the one coming July 3rd?
Yes, that's correct. And ODOT is reporting that receipts are coming in. They said about 27% higher than anticipated, so it'll probably be a little bit north of that.
But then, then you said there's another one coming, and that looks like the whole thing for 2019. Are you going then into 2020?
Well, it'll be the, that, the one that we get on July 19th will be for the first and second quarter of 2019. So the first disbursement goes back to 18, and then you have the first two quarters, yeah.
That makes sense, okay, now I got you. All right, okay, that makes sense, thanks.
Other questions? Council has approved a SMART Transit Plan on how to utilize all these funds, right? Yes, sir.
And it was in excess of the, of what was anticipated for us to receive. So even though there's projected that there's going to be more money, we should, we will get that money.
Right, correct, right, yes. And the plan right now is, the initial monies received will be, and I don't know if earmarked is the word we should use, but they are earmarked for the match on the electric buses that we just received. I was just notified, just before I came up here by Kathy, that the, I think it's almost $1.3, $1.4 million from the federal government was received today. So that money is back in the account. And then this money, as soon as it arrives, we will reimburse ourselves for the local match. So the impact to our bottom line will be zero, or at least our reserves will be zero. So we bought two buses, pretty much. Well, I don't want to get into the, it worked out very well. Right, right. We anticipated it might take longer to find a break even on those, right? Do you want to give a very brief report on the event you had this morning? Oh, sure, sure. A little after 10:00 AM this morning, we were having the executive team meeting as we do every Monday. We held it at SMART, and we were expecting Congressman Schrader. He did show up. He gave the mayor, myself, and Scott primarily. Scott Simonton, the fleet manager, gave him the 50-cent tour. I think we added another 50 cents, so it was probably about a dollar tour. But we took him from bumper to bumper through one of the electric buses. He won't be able to make the event on the 26th, so he wanted to come, because of that, he wanted to come in advance and get a, get a tour. And we took him through the bus, we explained how the buses worked. He knew how they got here, because he was one of the, one of our major supporters for that grant application, so he knew how, the how. And so he appeared to be extremely impressed on a number of levels. One, that we were able to pull it off as quickly as we did. We got the money, we got the award in 2017. It hasn't even been two years yet, and we are drawing down those funds because those buses are here and the infrastructure is in place. And so he realizes that Wilsonville and SMART was able to, it, it, he basically said it makes him look good, that we're able to do that. And so we want to continue to do what, that which makes him and the other elected officials look good. And it's certainly a feather in Wilsonville's cap to be able to pull off such an event. So he was mic'd up, gave some very, very good comments about what he had seen, and then posted something to Facebook, to that effect. And, and so we couldn't be more thrilled that he took time out of his busy, clearly a busy schedule, to stop by and pay us a visit. And we even took him for a ride around, and took him over to Transit Center, showed him our new e-reader board there. And so just a lot of the good things that are happening here in Wilsonville and with SMART. And I think he's going to go back to Washington DC and share, share the good news. Yeah, and we're one of the smaller agencies across the country that is engaged at this level, and I think that that's exemplary, and also is a feather in our cap, will, will give us a little bit of notoriety, probably, across the different discussions that happen. I'm looking forward to going back to Washington DC with you next year. Our head will be a little bigger, at least mine will next year. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much. We've got SDAC deferral and installment program discussion.
We've got SDC deferral and installment program discussion. Ms. Jacobson?
All right, so here is the session you have all been waiting for. This is your session. I have a very brief staff report in here, but as you're aware, and since March, we've been going through the revisions to Chapter 11, and the one area that's been the biggest area of questions or concerns for council has been around the SDC deferral and/or installment payment section. We used to have that in the code, and through the course of our discussions over the last couple of meetings where we talked about it, we talked about, I think the city of Gresham came up in terms of what their policy was. So in going back and reaching out to Gresham, what I did realize after those meetings with the council and hearing all of the ideas of what we might and might not do, is it really doesn't make much sense. I mean, our SDC deferral program has been in our ordinance, but a much better way to do it is to take, is to do it by separate resolution, because that gives you much more flexibility to adjust it as times and economics change. And it also allows us to pass the resolution that contains a lot of various substantive provisions that we need for the enforcement of, as well as logistics of assessing, assessing the SDCs, and takes out this one little component part that has been an issue that still has a lot of questions around it. So what I'm suggesting we do is, is still continue to focus, as you want, to the extent you want to, on an SDC deferral installment payment program or combination of the both, but we treat that separately. Tonight on the agenda, we have Chapter 11, and Chapter 11 now simply says that the council may, at its discretion, enact an SDC deferral and/or installment payment policy by resolution. So that's where it is. Also attached to the staff report is a kind of a menu of options that, that you have all talked about in the last few meetings. I tried to remember all of the ones, we tried to remember all of them, and this is a group effort between finance, community development, including engineering, legal, did I miss anybody? I think that's our group. So, economic development, yes, Jordan's here too. And I know last time, Councilor Akervall suggested, is SDC the most appropriate method to use to incentivize businesses, particularly small businesses, or is there something else? So we mentioned that to Jordan, and he's here to also assist in the discussion, if you would like to talk to him. But this is really your 20 minutes for you to brainstorm amongst each other, and I'm not sure if the mayor, I think the mayor is going to recuse, but I think you've all heard a lot of what the mayor thinks about the program in the past few meetings, but I'll let you take that position, or whatever you decide.
Well, I, I think that's the first point, is that by suggesting that that be done through a separate resolution, I think that, I support that. It gives the council a chance to have a little more discussion and develop a incentive program that might have several different components, should the council want to do so. Now, the removal of that program from the Chapter 11, I think means that I don't have any conflict with doing Chapter 11 on SDC fees, and I will engage in that. If the council wants to have a discussion about potential for an incentive program, wants to give any direction to staff about moving down that road, or beginning some sort of a study, or assembling some information to bring back to council, that is something that, that I will probably not participate in that piece of it. The rationale now, as I've said previously, is that I have participated in some of those programs in the past, and I don't want to, I don't have any legal conflict, but I don't want to give anyone the appearance that I would have a bias one way or the other, if I were participating in that. So if it comes to that discussion, I think maybe Council President Akervall would be the appropriate leader for that discussion when we, if you want to go there. The question I think staff is looking for initially is, are people comfortable with this reformulation of the code in Chapter 11, and ready to move forward on that? There is also a, is it in the packet, the response to the home builders?
Yes. So also attached behind the options that you could consider for the deferral program, as you are aware, the Home Builders Association has come before the council, I think, at least twice before, and they submitted, or they reiterated their position in another email that I think is in front of you, wanting certain deferrals and, and they wanting, wanting earlier assessment of the SDCs when they initially come in for a land, or when they initially rezone their property, and then a deferral until they're actually moving into the property, or it's ready for occupancy. So we did go through point by point, and this was, again, a team effort between the Building Codes Department, the Community Development Department, and Engineering and Legal to come up, to respond to that, as well as Finance. So our response to that is also in your packet, and it pretty much speaks for itself, but if you have questions about that, we're all here to answer that. So we can, assuming you're good with the bifurcating of the program, like we've just discussed, then the rest of the time can be spent by you discussing what you would like to do in terms of a deferral program. And you don't have to obviously finish that tonight. It can be just a plan of attack as to what the timeframe is going to be, and, and what the roles and responsibilities might be. Makes sense?
So that first question, I think, is, does council have any feedback on the Chapter 11 proposal as it's currently formulated?
I do.
Counselor West?
I think it's a really, I guess, talk it out, because I think that that's potentially a good solution that you guys came up with. But then it kind of drummed up some questions, and maybe some things we might want to consider. One of the first things that popped into my mind was Town Center. And one thing that the city lacks is boutique, small business, that food cart type of like artsy kind of vibe. We have a lot of chains and a lot of other types of businesses, but we do not have the quaint, great, little, like, cafe breakfast spot, and then like, the little gallery. We don't have a lot of that. And I think that's something that would really benefit. I almost like envision like Town Center and its scope, really kind of offering that really like, I mean, we're like in farm country, and like by wine country, and I just think that those types of businesses may need, and when Town Center happens, potentially a lot of them, may need some type of flexibility when they're mortgaging their house, and they got families, and they're not the guy that's building the big dealership. They're the, they're the mom and pop. In reality, they really are. They're the, they're the artist. And I just feel like those small businesses, often, the way the economy goes, good or bad, are always going to be putting their neck out there, whether it's a downturn recession, whether it's, you know, we're doing really well right now, forever long that lasts. And so I'm, I'm just thinking, like, as we want to attract those types of businesses, it might give us a competitive edge, not only with just like how much our SDCs are, but like what type of programs we have available to say, pick us not Tewolton, pick us not, not, you know, another competitive city around the area, is one of my thoughts.
So let me address that one, and I heard that one last time when we talked, and, and that's what sort of made us think, you know, Jordan wasn't in the room then, so we thought, okay, this may be a program that's much broader than SDCs to attract those kind of little boutique businesses. And that has never been addressed in the basic SDC code. So you can come up with a program that deals with SDC deferrals alone, if you want to, or you can come up with that and some companion programs through this resolution process. So I think this bifurcation of the two actually works better for what you're trying to do, because it gives you more time, and staff more time, to come up with ideas and talk specifically. Because with SDC deferrals, you have to be pretty neutral. It's like, you can defer up to this much, and for this long a period of time, and that's one aspect that may help a business. But there may be things that are much better for helping small business, and I think the mayor talked about a program Gresham used to have. They don't have that program anymore, but that doesn't mean that the city of Wilsonville can't come up with its own program for, and I think in the past, Councilor Lehan has talked along those lines too, about the little sort of international, not food carts, but restaurants in the corner. So, so yeah, so you can address all of those things through the separate process, which I think is going to work much better for that goal you just summarized, so.
And in the packet, I feel like that we had two things going on. We have the, just changing it to the new language, and then we had, I mean, I scribbled all these notes on the deferral, the installment, and the general kind of questions that we might have. It's almost like, am I right that we're addressing kind of now two different things? I mean, like, so yes, whether we're willing to like, take it out of Chapter 11, and then at the same time, we're addressing kind of our general questions about the topic of these programs. Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, so what's on the agenda for tonight is, one's just for discussion, the other's for action, which is the Chapter 11 of how we, how we basically administer the SDCs.
And so Chapter 11, that's on the agenda for tonight, I think we've talked about, and the big question was this deferral program. So now what's left is really the administration trying to clarify for developers, you know, when they have to appeal, what they can appeal, also the logistics of how the SDCs are calculated, all of that stuff, and it goes along with our, our code is frankly really old. League of Oregon Cities put out a new model code, and so that was sort of the incentive for a lot of cities to update their old SDC code. Our code also was pre-recession and then during recession, and so it's just very outdated. So that's what we'll be addressing just through the first reading tonight. And I think in terms of council comments, everything in there has already been addressed. There was one raised by Council Akervall today, and I'll talk about that when we get to Chapter 11. But separating them out gives you just a world of opportunity to do whatever you want in terms of incentive programs or deferral programs for whatever type of businesses you are trying to target.
How do you guys feel about it?
Since we're talking about it, yeah.
So as I understood, the, the topic right now is on Chapter 11, and so if the question is how I feel about Chapter 11, I feel comfortable with what is being proposed in our packet, and I had some questions and got some clarification earlier from, from staff, and so, as, as you said, the kind of like two parts, like, I think that the Chapter 11 is something that I feel comfortable with.
And there's no rush on the program?
Right.
The only rush would be, do you want to have something in place, you know, two months from now, or six months from now?
Yeah. So is that, do you want, I mean, it kind of seemed like we're queuing up that part, and if we're wanting then to move to our second part of the conversation, where we're talking about what sort of support or incentive, then, then I think we can move that. But just to clarify, what your question to us was, Chapter 11, I feel comfortable.
And I, and I'm willing to go with the, the vibe of the council on that piece on Chapter 11 and separating it out. And so I, Charlotte, Councilor Lehan and I, we just had a little get-together, we were on our way, and we talked about it briefly, and so, but like, I'm kind of willing to go with the group on this. I think it was kind of an innovative, creative way, just, yeah, we got a chance to talk about it a little bit.
And, and then I, I think it does give us an opportunity to, you know, look at it a little more holistically of what, what our goals are relative to small business, and is it just businesses that are building a, a building, or also businesses that are tenants trying to locate here, or, you know, and what kind of, what, what can we do more, more generally?
And Jordan does have some information on what other cities, in terms of programs as well.
Yeah, to attract the kinds of small business that you're after, and, but I think that's, as you were saying, a different and fuller conversation than SDCs.
So I would say.
Counselor Stevens?
Thank, thank you. Yeah, I don't think a deferral or incentive program belongs in a code. Code is about, you know, that's, that's our laws kind of thing, and then if the, and it, it's very technical, and it's how everybody has to follow, that, you know, no matter who it is, it's very cut and dried, then if there's an incentive program on top of that, that can use that code as the foundation, and then build upon that to incentivize businesses to come, that's a whole nother story. So we just need to pass this and move it, you know.
Right. Yeah, and the difference between resolutions and, and putting things in resolutions and putting things in code, is code is, like you said, it's the law of the land. And that doesn't mean they, codes never change, but they change much less frequently, whereas a resolution can be very fluid. You can pass a resolution now, and six months from now, you can go back and much more easier, much more easily amended, or expanded, or pull it back.
If it's not working for you anymore, you can rescind it, you know? All those things. It has flexibility.
Yeah, and you don't have two readings, and you don't, it doesn't, you know, you don't have appeals to other courts. So it's, it just works so much better, I think. When I was listening to what everybody was saying last time, it was like, this is not really so much about SDCs, this is about how do we incentivize small businesses and the boutiques and those kinds of things.
It's more of a program.
Exactly.
As opposed to code, and code enforcement.
Yes. So that's, that's the deal.
So it sounds like council is ready to deal with Chapter 11 tonight without a problem. I am trying to find your legal response to the home builders, and I can't find it.
It's in the packet.
It's right on mine.
It's dated June 12th.
It's in there. Questionnaire.
June 12th, it's the letter.
It's on page, I think, it's on page 10 of 264.
And it cites the five different departments that were instrumental in responding to the questions?
No, that wasn't it.
On page 10?
Nope, I was wrong.
Of our packet.
Page 10 of 264.
It is 10, it is 10, yeah.
But it's probably going to be different in your electronic packet, Mayor.
Yeah, it's 10.
Is it the same? Okay.
This is memorandum, Exhibit B.
I think it's 10.
Page numbers are at 10.
We're almost to 3, that's, yeah, exactly. Only two to count, to 3.
All right, there it is. It's not anywhere near the actual Chapter 11 issue, which is down on page 200 and...
No, it's up here with SDC work session.
It's part of the staff report, Tim?
The staff report, yeah.
Right after Agenda.
Chapter 11 is on page 186.
Right, so it's in the work session staff report.
That's why I couldn't find it.
It's a lot of pages. It's a lot of pages.
All right, there it is.
We've had them, 649.
All right, so I just want to be sure that that is in the record. Seems to me like it ought to be synced up with the Chapter 11 stuff when we...
But we separated out a lot of that stuff.
Into consent, it's with the consent stuff. Chapter 11 is with the consent.
No, it's not.
It's not?
Don't want to make, never mind. I don't want to make this complicated.
All right. So the secondary question, if, if everybody's comfortable with the Chapter 11 proposal, is at what point you want to discuss the idea about some other program, and how you want to ask staff to bring material to you to...
Yeah, well, what we could do is, you could, you could take what you have here, read it, we could queue it up for another work session, we could have Jordan put together a PowerPoint presentation on what other communities do. I think the direction would be for us, is what programs, what are you specifically trying to target? What are you trying to achieve with whatever program? Are you looking to help existing businesses that are already here, that maybe want to expand, or move to a different location? Because there's going to be different programs for different...
I suspect that will take some dialogue.
I agree with that, yeah.
So let's queue it up later.
So when would you like us to queue it up? Like, early fall, late summer?
Counselor West?
I have a quick question, because we, I'm reading the packet, I just started, I scribbled some basic thoughts, and there are too many to probably like, I mean, it's a full page that I wrote down, but I didn't know if it would be a good thing for me to just email you, Brian, and say, hey, hey, here's the, I went through that whole questionnaire, and these are my thoughts and questions with these questions that were posed, and maybe hash it out that way, since we're not totally approaching the subject tonight, but I wanted to know.
That would be fine. And if everybody did that, then we'd be able to coalesce around some kind of common themes, and then we could come back and say, well, we heard from all four of you.
I have something to say.
Sorry.
Before I go on this.
Be on record.
So, and it was because of what you said, Ben. I think the idea of... I think the idea of doing some sort of program that incentivizes those small businesses, especially like in the town center, or those, you know, just exactly what you described so well. But then what Barbara's response was, you know, you have to treat everybody the same. And so if you set that cap at whatever that figure is, it was $100,000 was just thrown out there, then the big players are going to get $100,000 ability too. And, you know, with our experience with Subaru and how that deferral kind of just got messed up, and then eventually in a lawsuit, you know, I just urge you, the council, to be careful about that, to be able to be successful in helping small businesses, but then not, you know, do something that's so grand that big developers who have the resources to pay the, pay upfront, don't take advantage and just, you know, use, use the city as a bank, basically. So I just urge you to do that. And whatever you decide, I'm sure will be wonderful.
And can we get, I had a hard time printing out that, those three pages, seven, eight, nine, on those questionnaires. Can we get a similar questionnaire to scribble on and to like notes and to send back to you that's not part of a 300-page packet?
Yeah, look at that.
Does anybody else want one too?
Anybody else want one? We can, we can email.
Yeah, yeah.
You want one?
Just email one separate from the packet.
Can we do that tomorrow, just email everyone except for Councilor Stevens?
She, end of the month.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, right.
Do you want it?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
You're still on the methodological table.
I'm holding her.
Oh, yeah, I am.
Her pizza's on fire. It's very, yeah.
Councilor Akervall.
I guess, I just wanted to say, since we're looking some feedback direction, right, I very much would like to hear from Jordan Vance, how this fits within information that he's gaining. You know, when I was reading through the packet and reading through these questions, my initial thought was, I think that, you know, just a few weeks ago, we had a presentation about how, you know, there's a plan to, to survey and to do some interviews with businesses. And I'm sure that there would be much information that could be gleaned from those interviews that would be helpful in here. And I'm, I'm curious, I guess, to hear what, what he's learning from that process.
So he could make that part of what we're talking about in terms of programs as well.
I think that would be great. Yeah, yeah. So that, I just wanted to, to say that comment. And then, you know, we, we talked earlier today on some of the, the menu of items, pages seven through eight and some of that. So it seems like, you know, my, my thoughts that I expressed earlier today, you know, still stand, and it seems like a good idea for all of us to kind of give feedback and then get some of that back and have that information presented in this broader context of what's, of what's going on, what the needs truly are in the city, and how we can most precisely address those needs, I guess.
Perfect. All right.
I think this is a really good discussion, and I think it's a breakthrough to separate the two out. So we'll get a better, a better, more well-thought-out program. And we'll get Chapter 11 done by now.
We're all excited about that.
Okay, that's all of our work session items. I did ask staff and collaborated with Councilor Akervall and some others, and we, you have a memo in front of you, I think you've all got it.
Mm-hmm. You do.
That is kind of proposed pieces for council appointment applications. And on the front, there's a couple of first ones start out with kind of the legal charter requirements for a counselor. And then, starting with number three and going on down are some of the considerations that I thought we coalesced around in terms of, of what might be important that the council keep in mind in evaluating applicants when they have applied. And then on the backside are some questions for asking people to write out answers to in the process of doing their application. Now, there's actually more of those than I had hoped there would be, but I don't know if there's, one, 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 two, three, four, five, seven. There's seven questions on the backside there. Is that too many? And we'll have to decide if the utility of having more answers is better or if it would be better to be briefer.
Well, and then you could also save some for whatever oral interview you could.
Yeah, I've got, I've got another whole sheet of notes about things we might talk about when we get to orals.
Is this discussed now or in the meeting?
Well, it depends on how soon you want to get this posted on our website to let people know they can apply, so.
I have one quick question on it, though.
Yeah, go ahead.
So looking at number four.
Yeah.
I think that question's great except for the last part. I have a little bit of question about intent to run for that position after that, which means that they would be appointed and then running as an incumbent. But if somebody didn't intend to run after that but was still qualified, that means we would be truly leaving up an open seat to voters. And I think it makes it a little bit less orchestrated or engineered to have it not be somebody that necessarily guarantees that they're going to run. Plus, asking somebody to say, hey, two years from now, I guarantee I'm going to run for this seat, is, a lot can happen in two years in someone's life, so I don't know about this one state.
Well, all, all of those things are things that ran through my mind. It's one of the reasons I use the word intends, not will run.
Okay.
Or connects.
And, and also, I think that even you might have recent experience where getting up to speed is a significant amount of time, effort, and whatnot. And if, if we didn't have to do that twice in 18 months and were able to do it once, then we would be a little further ahead. So the, I think there's arguably merit in someone that intends to be with it for the longer haul also. So, and, and these are stated as considerations.
Okay.
You know, these are for the council, when they're thinking and talking to and about applicants, to be thinking in your own mind, weighing different considerations. This isn't a drop dead, it isn't a requirement. It is a consideration for council to evaluate relative to all the other merits and demerits, maybe, of a particular applicant.
Perfect.
So in, in the, in that, along those lines, as a consideration, I think a consideration might also be where they're from.
Where they're from?
In the city.
They're from there, I think.
Well, but it's not stated as explicitly.
Values, diversity, and geographic experiences.
Yeah, I think it should be called out as specifically, because that's the way I forwarded it to you, Mayor, was.
Contributes to geographic balance, perhaps, or something like that.
Of your members, is what you're talking about.
Of the members. And, and again, only as a consideration, because if you have a stellar candidate and they live right next door to one of us, then we, we still might take them.
Outweigh the other.
But might outweigh the other thing.
We're all on one side of the freeway.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of, we're kind of heavy on the west.
We could rephrase that, Mayor.
Yeah, if you want, if the council thought that would be a better expression than the way I took it and.
What number was that?
Seven.
Number seven. So these are your considerations, right?
These are things that we would use when we were thinking about.
Yeah, to consider, to, yeah.
Right, so it's not, you're not valuing diversity and geographic experiences, you're.
I, I thought that was, have they, have you been to Paris and stuff like that?
Yes. Have you been to Walton?
Have you been to Walton?
All right, so would you like, would you like to ask that to be changed a little bit then, to reflect more?
Yeah, I think that's good.
If that's a consensus?
Yes.
Well, or changed or added, because I think there's value in what is currently included in.
Remember, these are your criteria.
Yeah.
Not something you're asking from the applicant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're not criteria either, they're, they're considerations.
We might have in mind, in reaching our own decision.
And we might throw any one of them out because it's overweight by some.
So I hear at least, Councilor Akervall saying she'd like to have seven remain, but add the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I would like them to have seen Paris.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it's about seeing Paris, but I mean, Paris is lovely.
You're actually perfect. You can think criteria perfectly.
Geographic representation.
Well, we've, we've had a lot of people on boards and commissions that have grown up in Boston or New York or whatnot, and they bring a perspective that is not quite as parochial, perhaps.
That's a good geographic experience.
And so that's the side I was thinking about when I was trying to word this.
I think, or even if it's not.
It's just a different, like, multi-generational.
Even if it's not their own experience, but values that others have that experience and believes that it should be listened to, I think.
All right, so you want to add one that talks about?
We'll add one, we'll add a new eight, and then move everything else down.
Okay.
Okay.
And that'll be about distribution throughout the city or something?
Distribution of your members or something to that effect. I understand what she's saying.
Representation from throughout the entire city.
Yeah.
Or.
Because right now we have.
Philawa, Whip Westside.
Yeah, Westside.
It's all Westside.
But we don't have a ward-based vote.
True.
I mean, this is just a very generic kind of.
And, and every once in a while, the city council just gets all upsided for a good reason.
Charbonneau for a while, right?
Charbonneau, who dominated for quite a while, and then, and now we've got no, nobody. So.
It's not intentional.
No, it just shifts around. But, but when you have an opportunity to appoint someone, then you can kind of look at that, is, would, should it be another Westside?
Consideration.
Okay, well, we can do that. Anything else that people would like to see? Is seven questions too much? I mean, I'm thinking partly about how people do or don't answer those, you know, will indicate something about how they approach problems.
Do you think it would be smart to say, to, I don't, a reference beyond just us, like somebody else in the community, giving them an actual reference as if you would be applying for a job? Is that an opportunity to not read them all?
Top one.
Oh, by what? You're just kind of listing to support you. I mean, you could, would you maybe like some type of written, I mean, listing somebody's a little bit different than having, than me saying, I'm going to write a paragraph saying, well, I think you would be great as my neighbor or somebody in the community might be a good.
But if you have their contact information, any of us could just call them up and say.
Sounds like you're talking maybe about having them submit letters of recommendation.
Yes, that's like, kind of another level.
Anybody can do if they want to do it, you know.
That's true.
I mean, partly I'm looking for personal initiative here, not just on follows directions.
Yeah.
Okay, give me one second, I haven't read this whole page.
Are we asking them to attach a resume?
Didn't.
I know that.
Good, yeah, I mean, but there is a, is a question, number 15, describe current employment, if employed, and any past employment you consider relevant to the council position, your educational background, and explain how those experiences or training enhance your qualifications to serve.
A resume would make that so much easier to, to get through.
Or, or both. But, well, because, I mean, the resume would give like dates and places and some of that, you know, technical part, and then this would, question 15, as it's posed now, would allow for a bit of a narrative around that to fill in.
You could put that with a little asterisk and say, attach your resume.
Attach a resume.
Attachment of a resume would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ooh, would be helpful.
Yeah, perfect.
Because, I'll just say, as an older person, you, it's, do you have a resume?
Not in a while. It's sitting on a shelf somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty darned old.
It's pretty darned old, right?
And, and if we, if, if we had someone, say, from Charbonneau or one of our other people who've been retired for 10 or 20 years, probably do not have one.
So could you say resume in lieu of attaching past employment?
We said and/or, it's perfect.
No, I don't, I don't like that at all. I want them to tell me why.
What, what you.
What, what you've done that makes you a better candidate.
Yes, I agree with that. I'm just saying, but in lieu of having to list them, if they attach their resume and still answered the questions, it would be okay, right? It's the same thing.
It would have to be clear that just attaching a resume did not answer 15.
I think we have them write down, so maybe I know if they want to attach.
Yeah, just say.
Please feel free to attach resume.
Yeah, that's what we should say.
Not required, but please feel free to attach resume.
Feel free, if you have a resume.
If you'd like to, yeah, also, not.
If you'd like to also attach a resume, feel free.
Okay. Got that, Kim?
All right, we can do those things. Anything else?
Not wasted, we're not done with reading.
Would you make available to them online the packet like you guys gave to myself and Kristen on the Roberts Rule, so they can familiarize themselves with that? If you have wanted to ask them questions around that, or do you, because most people that aren't going to come up the street are going to know the Roberts Rules. I mean, Scott didn't, I didn't. You, you probably didn't come in right into council, there's a little learning curve there.
Yeah, but I think that's if you're appointed, that's not everyone that's applying.
And Roberts Rules is pretty standard, you can always Google.
I know there's YouTube videos that help you get up to speed and.
Yeah, that's all online.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say 17 is not necessary.
I may not, yeah, I would agree.
I'd just eliminate 17. I would eliminate 16 and, and fold it into 15.
I thought 15 was long already.
Well, I would say your current employment or volunteer, you know, wherever you say employment or volunteer work, they can speak to their employment or their volunteer work or both.
I just think that gets really hard to do all of that in one question. I'd like to see 15 and 16 stay. I could, I could go with council if you felt 17 was not relevant, except that's the way we operate. And I was looking for if anyone wanted to describe how they have functioned in a similar way in the past and, and what they found to be the challenges. But, you know, I don't think it's a make it or break it kind of thing.
Well, yeah.
I don't, I don't know if 17's totally necessary.
17.
Yeah.
Question 17?
If you've never done Roberts Rules of Order, that's, we're not eliminating you.
No, no, but I think, as I read it, see, it's interesting, because, right, we all have different perceptions when we're reading these questions. When I read it, I guess I gave less pause with Roberts Rule of Orders and more, or of order, and gave more, I don't know, thought to being in a, in a, a formal board or structure. And they may or may not use Roberts Rules of Order, but like, what does it feel like to be part of a, a formal or formally organized body? And there are challenges and advantages to that, and I think it's, you know, something that you, that you work through. So, I don't know, I mean, that's just how I, how I interpreted it. Maybe it's the specifically conducts business under Roberts Rules of Order part, maybe like serving in a formal body or organizational board or something.
I drafted this, somebody added that.
I think it was Roberts Rules.
No, I did not say Roberts Rules.
Well, what was the intent?
Talking about Frank's rules.
Maybe you go back to that.
George's rules.
George's rules?
Some other guy.
Regarding 16, I do think, you know, one of our.
Under formal rules of order.
Evaluation criteria is demonstrated commitment to the community through prior service, such as participation in city boards. So I definitely want there to be a, a opportunity to call out volunteer service and membership So I definitely want there to be a opportunity to call out volunteer service and membership on different boards or commissions or something like that.
And we're not just saying they have to volunteer right on a city board or commission.
There's all kinds of nonprofits or, exactly.
They're making the case for what their background is and how it's relevant.
Service, right, and service, service.
Service in the community as a whole, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
On my number 17, I had, describe what experiences you have in serving on a body which conducts business under formal rules of order and process, and how you found it to be workable, difficult, successful or unsuccessful.
Did you have to fill out this many questions when you were appointed?
Which time?
The first time.
I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking.
No.
Council now, is that, is that too many questions?
That's too many questions.
Too many questions.
It's too, too many questions.
Yeah.
Maybe three, I don't know, it's too many questions. I didn't answer a single one.
All right, so 17, the most disposable piece, you want to go up 17?
Yeah, no 17.
Kristen, we have to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's down to six questions then, which was kind of what I had set in my mind as an upper limit. Is that still too many? Is there something else you feel is disposable?
Well, 12 is just listing out.
Yeah, one of them's like your, one of them's like a resume.
Like your references.
Yeah.
You know, your reference, that's not requiring a lot of.
That's what I thought too, I mean, that's.
Writing.
Are any of these like redundant though, where they're going to be answering, like, just when they answer 13 and they get to 15, I'm just throwing it in there, say, please reference such and such, like, is some of these a little bit redundant?
If they feel that they've already made the case, they could certainly answer it that way. Might tell us how brief they are in their communications, whether they're going to talk all the time or whether they're not.
See.
There's some similarities between 13 and 18, people looking to trim.
Right.
Can I win?
They're like the same question.
Yeah. 13, 14 and 18 are forward-looking questions. What's important to you, are you going to, what, what are your goals and ambitions?
Right.
But the other, I think 18 skews to a positive. I think you're not looking for ways to improve, what, what do you see should change in this?
Yeah, it could be challenges, one of the challenges.
Challenges you face, because it's what you believe makes yourself special or unique in a positive way. What about the negative way?
Well, that kind of goes back to 14 in my mind. What, what do you think is important for the council to accomplish?
Yeah, and that's what, like Charlotte's saying, combine those.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't necessarily saying that, but I would, I would order them differently, at least, and put those, the three that are asking your opinion about what you want to do and what your goals and vision are, put those three at the end. And then come up with three other questions that are qualifiers, and maybe only two. But, you see, the reason I would combine 15 and 16 is I would just say, describe your experience, whether it's employment or volunteer or whatever it is. Maybe you.
What does your background, education experience qualify you for this position, whether it's your professional life or your personal life?
Volunteer, your educational, your training, all those things. What in your background, you could parentheses those, what, what in your background do you feel is most relevant to a city council position? And just leave it open-ended.
I like that. They might write an essay, but it would be good.
It might be a short answer, might be a long answer. And then, and still say, attach a resume if you wish.
So that would combine.
15, 16.
15 and 16.
Yeah, not make it.
If you're all in agreement.
Not make it twice as long, just, I mean, shorten it up to, it's a question about your experience.
Background, professional, education and volunteer work.
Keep it broad.
All right, so that would be five questions then.
That would be five, yeah.
And you, you said reorder 13, 14 and 18 and make those the last three?
Those to the, to the end.
Also similar, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so then you're asking for their.
Three, four, five.
Their recommendations, people who are recommending them, and then you're asking the big question, which is what's, what in your background is, and then three questions about.
Vision.
Vision.
Okay.
We can do that if everybody's.
Staff do that or do I need to?
We can do it.
You got that down?
We're taking good notes here, we'll piece it together tomorrow.
Okay.
That would be the last question I have, is if you trust us to do all this and get the application up and running without running it by you again, we can get it posted this week.
Go. Go.
Do, push the button on.
Okay, now last, last meeting, we talked about a packet of reference materials that we would ask to go to each applicant.
Yep, we all, we have all that.
You have that?
Yep, we can put that on there as a, as a PDM.
But, but you can pull out the application, because this is going to replace the application.
Yes, yeah, what, what we had last time would minus the, the considerations and the questions and the application.
So, so that packet of reference materials and this, this would be the packet, and at that point, we would be ready to receive an application.
Yes, and I'm assuming 30 days is still what you'd like.
Thirty days.
Are we keeping it open for 30 a period?
The goal of appointing somebody in, second meeting in August.
Means we got a bunch of stuff to do to interview, depending on how many applications we get.
Yeah.
All right? We good? Is that what you want?
Here we go.
Okay. Sounds good.
And then we do, uh, some people, Counselor Stevens, if you would all, you like to draw the sign.
It's a what, a map? So you're going to send us a map of where you are?
In the world.
Oh.
Where?
Where in the world is this council?
Steven, we're like Carmen San Diego, Wilsonville.
If, is there anything else people would like to talk about officially?
No.
All right, let's call a German here at 6:52. Thank you.